Okay. Uh, the workshop on order.
I have none.
Okay, so I want to discuss the American Rescue Plan. I actually want to talk about this.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm gonna go through some PowerPoint presentations, but I want to start off. What's happening is looking for the dimensions and direction. Can't take action at a workshop. But we are looking for direction on how to utilize the funding that we have received from the American Rescue Plan. So, as you know, what is that? Let me... It's working. Turn it off. Very good work. Two minutes. There. Then I'm looking. I've been a void. Yes. Go ahead. Okay. There we go. So, as you know, we're gonna receive a total of 21 point... That's not enough. Yes, this way. 21.927 million dollars over the next couple of years. We have received the first payment of 2.963 million dollars. We received that payment on May 19th, and we have received it within our accounting or accounting purposes within the general fund on first reading and a budget amendment on Wednesday. That second reading will be on the 16th. The second payment, I'm sorry. The second payment of 10.9 will be approximately May of 2022. Very important, we have until December 2024 to utilize these funds. So there is a window that we have to spend these funds. Or at the very least, we have to pick up direction from the Treasury. We have to be under contract for use of these funds. Because that's very important, because that... 2024 seems like a long way away, but it is. It's not. It's a very short window. So I want to go over uses of the funds. What's allowable expenses under the American Rescue Act? To support public health expenditures, funding COVID-19 mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral health care, and certain public health safety staff. To address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector. By the way, y'all can stop me at any time if you want to ask questions. Okay. Sorry. You said you received 2.9 million already? Or the 10.9? 10.9. Okay. Did I say two? Yeah. I heard you. About that. 10.9. All right. Replace lost public sector revenue. Funding to provide government services to the extent of the reduction of revenue standards during the pandemic. They have provided us recent updates and information on how to calculate the loss of revenue. And what you will see from Robert in just a short bit of time, we is utilizing that formula that was provided us a few days ago. To provide pay and pay for essential workers. Additional support to those who have and won't bear the greatest health risk because of their service in critical infrastructure centers. And to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Making necessary investments to improve access to clean water, drinking water, support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and to expand access to broadband internet. These are the allowable expenses from the Treasury, the direction we're getting, and that direction being updated from Redditor. So here, I'll go over this one if you don't mind. Sure. So in calculating the revenue losses for the general fund and for all of these different divisions of the city, we utilize the formula provided by the Treasury. And so you'll notice that the number has gone up. So for the general fund, utilizing the formula provided, the revenue losses are 1.865 million dollars. For the free trade bridge, 336,525. For hotel, hotel fund, 351,380. For the communication center, 21,989. For the 4A, for the Heat Economic Development Corporation, is 119,492. For the community improvement board, that's the 4B, 34,113. For the municipal auditorium, 328,866. For the sanitation fund, 354,340. For the arts entertainment and, I'm sorry, arts and characters museum, 8,809. And for the golf course, 213,911. For a total of 3.6 million. I'll say the exact number.
Then how did this... I'm sorry. The communication center. So the comm center falls under the general fund? So is that under like... So all of that in the... How do they lose revenue? I don't understand how they lost revenue. I don't understand how sanitation suddenly would lose revenue.
If it had like, if there's a comparison of whatever revenue you had in 2019 compared to the previous three, four years, it was an average of that.
But sanitation has been growing every year.
So sanitation, some of the accounts on restaurants, some businesses were slowing down and they were reducing their services.
Oh, that makes sense.
So that's...
The comm center, how do they make this money?
That's a very good question. I could go, I could go look at...
Oh, fire. Doesn't make...
Oh, the fire line, yeah. The false alarm. Okay. So that's what that is, a false alarm. You want to verify that?
Yes. A false alarm.
Well, additional revenue...
It includes a growth factor, so if the 4.1% is what the Treasury is saying that we can include as a growth factor, it's the larger of the average of the previous three years.
But there is a component on holiday.
And we do have... We do have all the activations. And...
Hold on. I just didn't hear that. That makes, that makes a difference. It's like tickets. Right?
Right. Because if you get like three alarms and they're on a failure.
So good.
Now I want to point out that once, if the city council decides to utilize this revenue losses, this will be accounted to the different entities or divisions, including the general fund. Now, once it's the kind of point of general fund, it can be utilized for mixed operations. Drainage projects, infrastructure projects, roadway projects, et cetera. So just because we're seeing that money going to the general fund doesn't mean that we can't use it to create... We can't. Okay?
They're very flexible on their uses. You just, there are certain things you can't do, and certain changes that just leave them there.
Because that revenue would have come in and you would have used it basically.
That is our intention. It's got to be a direct effect of the government, and so they don't associate that. Because it's an allowable expense, the revenue losses, this accounts for a portion of the money already, then we, now we got more time to do all of this. Right? All right. On the uses of the auditorium and the Casa de la Estad, as you know, the city council approved the use of the auditorium, the Casa de la Estad as an alternate care facility and an amusement center. It was instrumental in assisting our local hospitals in getting patients out, get them better, and moving and truly treating them to best place. So the state covered the cost of the personnel, the doctors, nurses that were in the building. They did not cover the cost of the use of buildings. So we'd like to reimburse ourselves with the use of buildings by $800,000. Can you explain that to the other side? We have a new business on our side. What does mean like reimbursing? So the auditorium, the Casa de la Estad, they're considered enterprise funds. They're still the same departments. And so when we have round of all the buildings, those rounds go to those departments. And so in this case, we didn't pay the round while we, I guess we paid it out of general fund.
Well, for the period of August 8th, 2020 through April 29th, 2020, when it was used, it was being used as the amusement center. So we couldn't use the auditorium or the Casa de la Estad to generate revenue. So essentially, the use of it is what we're saying, that rental unit that was normally the... That he provides, was being like, sex department management. So we're kind of going to use that money to reimburse the auditorium.
To us, we can use that money sometimes.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Any things that are moved...
Yeah.
This is, you all need to start, you all need to give us directions, but anything...
But it assault has to be justified.
So we're set now. Okay. So on the essential workers, essential workers and one-time salary adjustment. We talked about that again. This is up for discussion. Whatever the city council wants to do, that's certainly respect to the rhythm of the commission. We have 574 full-time and part-time employees in the city. I included part-time, 27 of those. And we have waterworks employees, 141, and tolls of 715. And so the cost to provide those employees with a one-time salary adjustment, the essentials, essential employees of $1,000 is approximately 894,000. Why is this more than the 715? Because you have to account for the benefits and all the others. Now that is also up for discussion, and you all need to tell us what direction you want us to take there, if any at all, or take it off completely. Western at Dover, so you have the 10.9 million dollars that we received. We are proposing to utilize 3.629509 for revenue losses as broken down earlier. 800,000 for the payment for the use of the auditorium, the Casa de la Estad. The 894 for the one-time salary adjustment for the essential workers, waterworks and city employees. And then you have 5.6 million dollars at Dover that can be used for infrastructure projects. And Carlos and Tim have presentations on that. And I'd like to go through those presentations and then open up for discussion.
That's, that's on water and...
Drainage. Yes. So we're gonna start with drainage, Carlos is going first, but you know I want to go then. I want to get the... The right hand is a lot of one day or five. Your turn.
Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon. We have a quick PowerPoint presentation that identifies, that says $4 million in drainage expenses that we would like for y'all to consider. The breakdown really on two of those projects is matching funds that are associated with TDA or FEMA grants. We identified two projects, total of about $8 million are matching portions, would be 25%, so approximately $2 million. The other two projects are projects that have been identified in the master drainage plan, and I think would have a big significant impact in what we have been experiencing lately in that associated drainage. Localized flooding in the roadways along Wichita and the area in front of the police department, which is third-party grant. For some reason, the matching funds did not go through, or the Business 77 project does not get approved by TDA, then these funds would be made available at your discretion to maybe fund other projects. And I want to go through those projects to, for your information. When those remain restricted... I'm sorry. If those, if I just don't know through that 1.4, then that...
That opened it up for new spending.
Yes, but still restricted in what we can do, right? Because we still have to count.
We have to...
He doesn't want the general fund to...
Stormwater. Question. I'm sorry. You said, when do we find out if they're going to match?
So on the Jefferson Street, we have already been notified that we have been approved for that one. The Business 77, that one I'm suspecting could be probably about another two to three months or so. We have, as a matter of fact, this morning received communication, because this, these two projects, the 21st and the Fifth and Seventh Street Improvement Projects, are also TDA and more grant-funded projects that we have submitted applications to FEMA. Looks like the 21st Street Improvement Project is also being highly considered for 45. Again, we're looking at a 25% match, which is, in this case, 400,000.
So Carlos, on that spreadsheet, the only one that's been approved right now is number one?
Yes, number one, yes.
So out of the 1.4, 1.5, there's still a million dollars left.
So when do we submit the Jefferson?
So in essence, we've been submitting these projects. Every year or so, there's a call or every, after every disaster that we, that's been designated for this region, we pay open a call for projects. And so since I first got here back in 2016, even before that, we have been submitting projects for...
What about the availability of contract? We're imagining all the other cities are getting money, everybody else are doing projects. And especially for the 2024 deadline. How does that plan to affect, I don't know, transparency or something? I mean, so our story is getting approved, that we can show that we have the money available and we have a contract to...
That's one of the reasons they're trying to put these out as quickly as possible. The grant one, you know, anything, any of the delays us receiving the grant funds is gonna probably increase price. The price will increase. The sooner that we can get some of these bodies done in-house, or with some of these funds instead of waiting for grant funds, and the quicker we can put them out, the better. That's what we want to do. We want to put some stuff...
The last month.
We're happy. Because it's a design time, right? Even if we, if we had to prove, if the commission approves funding for drainage projects, we have to IRQ the IRQ here. That's gonna take over two months. Then you gotta design, have to take up to six months. Then we want to... So you see how the time starts...
A big year from now.
It's gonna be, and this, everybody else is gonna be doing the same thing. The quicker we get to the IRQ process, the better off we're going.
All right. And just to add to that one really quick, those projects that go to TDA and FEMA have a little bit more elaborate analysis in that there's more documentation, more benefit cost ratios that needs to be formulated and determined by, by the consultant. And those projects seem to balloon the cost of the administration cost that's intended to.
So there's a potential risk, Carlos, right? If the TDA grant one, if, if construction prices balloon, you have the cost benefit analysis, change into the ratio, and that could pose an issue with that grant. Because they don't get cost benefit analysis.
So the reason I call these in-house projects is really is that the project management being done, or would be done by in-house staff, you would still get a consultant, an engineering consultant to, to do, to do a prepared construction plans. However, we already know exactly what it's that we want. If, I'll go into the details of this project, because we've seen the, the water pumping, flooding and so forth that facilitates that analysis. And it's just a matter of getting with a contractor or a consultant, telling them, okay, I need construction plans for this, and then we're gonna fit it out, get a contractor. So the timeframe kind of reduces down probably to about six months or so. So if you allow me really quick, again, I want to go through these two, four projects. The Jefferson Storms improvements, again, this is a project that's been approved by FEMA for funding, and it's along Jefferson and 76th Drive, right here in front of the library, City Park. And then it also has some laterals improvements along Fifth and 13th Street, right in front of the administration or stadium. Takes it down to Erickson. So a lot of these projects are increasing capacity, increasing efficiencies. And so we're primarily focused on increasing the size of the diameter of the pipe that we have to drive. So some cases, we go from 18 to 36, and in some cases, we're even going with boxes. What complicates this project is that there's a railroad crossing somewhere in here around Saturday. This street is Fifth Street. Yeah, Fifth Street. And so that's, that's gonna kind of delay the project itself. So sooner we get into it, matter of fact, we've already started communications where the...
Is that where the water?
You know, certainly, the water plant is a little bit further back this way on Jefferson.
Sure.
It is a city lane.
Oh, and city lanes.
That's on the street.
The little, the little... But that's city lane, and then you have the library.
That, that would stop, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It jobs, it jumps over.
Yes.
So this is the library. So our share, and what we're asking to allocate from the, from the funding available is 590,000. The other project, again, it's a application that we have in process with FEMA for positive funding. It's a larger, I guess, spoke project in that it has a larger drainage area. It's along Business 77, Sun Tzu Street, and Sixth Street, picture drainage improvements up to the high school area, more or less, and kind of connects to the Jefferson Storms system down here on Jefferson. Again, the project includes increasing drainage pipes, providing for seven-by-seven drainage reinforced concrete boxes. Total cost approximately five, six million dollars with a 25% share. That's 1.4 million dollars, 1.5 million dollars. The in-house projects, again, projects that we would take the lead on and like, get a consultant onboard and have them start preparing drainage construction plans would be these two. And the first one would be Losano Street Detention Pond. The location of this pond is catatonic corner to the condo academy of the middle school, ninth grade campus, here along Losano and Wichita. And I'll show you a better site plan, you children, but what we want to do here, we have a 50-acre tract of land that's owned by the city. We clear it and in essence, create a detention pond to hold water before the system takes it north along this drainage disman up T Street and then Wilson, takes it up to the Frontage Road and then up to the main canal that's just south of Will, I'm sorry, north of Losano. The estimated cost of construction for this would be a 1.4 million. We're looking at about anywhere from 1.45 thousand cubic yards of dirt to be moved out of here, up to maybe 200,000 cubic yards, depending on grades, elevations, and so more or less all part.
Yeah.
About 10 feet. So for security purposes, we will need to fence that. Hey, baby, you're... And I'm assuming that we're gonna have a lot of... So just to kind of give you a better indication or location of where we're at, the property that we're looking at, this 50-acre tract, we, even after these improvements were done, we still experienced flooding in front of the PD office or building and along Wichita. And so the detention pond, the, the goal is to connect this system here, carry some of the water that we get on High Street, also the funding, and take it north, hold it in the detention pond, wait for the, the canal to go down or lower in water surface elevation, and then release it, tie it in back into this point, like, which is a six-by-three concrete pond.
Can I ask a question on that? Police station, right about the police station is fighting, right? And it really is just that section, right? Because you go towards the, God's in the mountains, doesn't make, cross tracks, doesn't make, it's right there in front of the P.
Yeah.
So this pond, that, that would, that PD is not 10 years old, correct? I mean, I'm 10 years old, or maybe 15 years old. If we not give improvements to that when we take inspection? I think you probably want to hear about some more.
But I think, for me, I think it's about eight, four, eight, four, eight. And with these drainage improvements, the colorful lines, those are all improvements that were not just part of the Northwood Drainage Project. Now what we didn't do during that project is really not connecting...
My question is, when you're constructing the PD, the design, the design and all that architectural work should have...
So we have ponds. So if you go onto PD, there's a detention pond within the ground. Within the ground.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's two.
Oh, so they did that to meet the requirements?
So the street gets, so the street is flooding, and High Street is flooded, but the PD had never had water. They had, they had too large detention ponds. That bleed out into that line that runs along Wichita. And so what Carlos is calling is to create a detention pond, keep that water off the street in front of the PD, and actually quicker, pension the pond and breathe it out slowly as the elevation of the detention where the drainage system up north of Atlantic Falls, Old Town, off Wilson Road.
Yes.
That's the one that did this concrete lining. When that service elevation drops, then that will start bleeding out. Could that give us more to add if you can get water out? Sorry, Carlos. If I should... Another question on the drainage, would there be pumps of rather? On that.
We have preliminary, look at it, Commissioner, and my thought is that we want to make it as possible to get more involved. And so we go past 10 feet or so, more likely we'd have to go and get a pump, small, smaller. And so one, one, want to make it safe, but also gain as much water as possible.
Let me have the water on the road.
And so we... The cost of the pond is factored into the cost. These are pictures from last, May 19th, last week, or actually two, two, oh, two. Again, this is Losano where it turns south into this area, which is Wichita. You see that there's plenty of water on the roadways and on some of the city property, park property here. Fortunately, there's no water going into the residential areas. But again, the calculation or the thought here is that this wooded area right here, which is the detention pond, the most potential pond site, hold that water on, on that property, hold it, and that's really what's, what's happening right now. The water's pumping right now here on the street. Once the water surface elevation goes down to that town, then everything rushes out. Obviously, we don't want to see that. We want to rather have that water on the road. The other project that we feel that we can get a contract going quickly is a rehab project. And this addresses areas in the downtown area on the west side of railroad tracks, West Street, Jackson area. And so the thought here is to rehab the existing storm sewer line. The storm sewer line itself is, is in average condition. This storm sewer system is about 20 years old, in some sections anyways. And so the thought here is go in there, rehab the pipe, the joints, seal them, and, and remove any silt obstructions that might be in there. We're talking about areas where they have 10 by 10 boxes, and there's silt of about maybe two feet or so of silt. And so that's mechanically, you need to do that mechanically. It's not necessarily something that you can go in there and dredge it, because it's, one, it's restricted in space, and then there's a lot of joints or sections, turns that you'll, in essence, need to get a contractor with the right equipment that will be able to push and remove a lot of the silt that's accumulated in the pipe from the system over the years. The other part that we have identified is that there's areas of washout where the, where the pipe discharges, it discharges just south of Taff, there on the wastewater treatment plant, and into the Arroyo de la Llora. There's areas that have washed out. There's a structure at one point in this area. This is looking south, railroad track is here. Looking south, the, the area that where, where staff has been able to maintain and keep clean is probably about 150 or feet or so. The remaining part of it is, it's really steep, eroded, and we need to get a contractor at that area.
Uh, the, the remaining part of it is, is really steep, eroded, and we need to get a contractor at that area to kind of reestablish those slopes and, and facilitate that, that, that flow of water. Uh, this is the asphalt box itself, uh, that, uh, also needs to be looked at and cleaned out uh, for better, uh, increase in capacity and efficiency. This photo right here shows some of the washout of the, uh, structure that we had at one point in this area.
Carlos, isn't it possible though that we start rehabbing something, start opening stuff, find some broken pieces and whatnot, if you're down for them, that place, so?
The, it's, it's difficult, Commissioner, cause we have been able to get in there, even though we have a camera, a, a video camera, uh, we, we have found out that there's limited areas where we can access that pond to figure out the submission. We asked you a question, yes, there, there could be a situation where the cost increases and, and we can't just put it in. Well, if we have a healthy fund down, why don't we come back to the commission, who will be best, this will be the one that will come back. You said, you said, you need a budget?
This is all, I know it did, cause I was saying, thought about it, kind of agency, yeah, exactly, that's it. And we put another, you know, three or four of that, a lot of the way, because I didn't have, that's, that's expensive, all time, yeah, mid time, right? It's a, that, that, we're not, we're not having to come back to try to get that money, so the sign, cause if, if you don't use it, then we come back anyway.
We can add a percentage for changes in treatment.
I would think so.
I think, yeah. All right, uh, again, those are the four projects that kind of prioritizing, again, if, if for some reason this one gets pulled through, uh, again, this, this dollar, uh, if you all approve that these dollars are, uh, are allocated for this project and it doesn't come to fruition, then this money would then be available to maybe fund some of these projects down here.
The other parts, seven, eight, two, will be already defined. Like, you know, you have five, six, seven, those are the, like, that's a limit, we've already planned, like, some components that we want to deal with, there's, there's more, like, you know, five, five, two, three, five.
Uh, that we have submitted to the, uh.
No, just like in your numbers, you can get our last rated, so we got to do, we just don't have the funding.
Correct.
We have the master grades, that is, five percent of our own project.
Chris, can you? Yeah, so, so. And, 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 uh, there were four projects. And you added, I had some, I added an additional, I think, seven or eight projects that could, uh, also considered down the railroad, if funds were available. So, uh.
There's more.
Okay, no, 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 there's, there's a lot of this, uh, basic budget that we've got. It's just identifying and leveraging grant funds so that the burden costs, to protect areas and various whole blocks of these projects, if they're very expensive, if you can tell number two, that's a six million dollar fund price.
So then we, like, we, this, this. So, so just, so like, if we, as a commission, decided that we're gonna use more money for drainage, then you guys would have the projects waiting for that?
Well, we, we'd rather get a merit or get, get identified, other part or, yeah, okay, cool. So, uh, again, there's the Twenty First Street, uh, Fifth and Seventh, and then some drainage ditches and, uh, reprofiling drains that we would like to, uh, also be, uh, be considered. Again, these first two projects are funded, uh, we're, we're hoping to get funded, partially funded, FEMA at seventy-five percent. Uh, Twenty First Street, different projects, uh, that's, uh, just, uh, north and south of Jefferson Street, on Twenty First Street. Our portion, if funded, would be about, uh, four hundred thousand. Uh, Fifth and Seventh Street is another project, uh, about, uh, the project title is Fifth and Seventh Adams, Jefferson. Uh, at Tunavamop, two point six zero, with a six hundred and seventy thousand, uh, C M. This one is, is one that we, uh, uh, also want to kind of maybe prioritize if, if available, and this is to go in there and create in-like detention ponds. Many of the, uh, drainage canals, those canals that are not, uh, fall under the purview of, say, the drainage district number five, uh, Cameron County. This one for Taffel is the one off of, uh, eight hundred, FM eight hundred, uh, just north of Traxor Way, uh, on the south side, north of the expressway. Our thought is to go in there and again, right away, if available, uh, excavate it, reprofile it so that we create this bench and in essence, create additional volume for water to pond and hold in the canal instead of, again, uh, holding or pumping water on the streets. Uh, we also want to go in there and look at rehabbing some of the asphalt structures, water that, pipes that bring water from the subdivision into the canal, just to preserve them, protect them, and make sure that they don't get compromised with the moving operation. Uh, some areas we've looked at, uh, flat cage too, like, for example, secluded acres, to protect water from going back into the subdivision when the water surface elevation of the canal gets too high. Uh, and so we've done that and we've seen some, uh, success on, in doing that.
This particular drainage also received a lot of.
Correct. Uh, again, this is just a summary. Any more questions? If I have any questions? Yeah. What does that want? And that's, that's in your package?
No.
You should see it, you should see it last year. So the one that we completed are online, and the copy of the master grade set is also. So what we do, to this, the study of the line, we took all the systems and the study, we put it on a map, city map, and all the yellow are identified improvements in essence. Salamiya.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thanks again for considering, I think it's from the, on, on this quite a projects. I mentioned before that we've been working on a master plan for a few years now, and we're getting very close to the end of that, got a workshop scheduled for the fourth second. I'll be sending my files, uh, to that, uh, event. Master plan will address three things, existing capacity problems, future passing needs as the city grows and more flow comes and more demand is inserted on the system, and finally renewal of aging, failing infrastructure that needs rehabilitation or replacement. Uh, we have a number of projects, I think we're talking to someone who ordered one hundred and fifty, two hundred million dollars on twenty-year horizon, and identified that plan. So there's a significant amount of need in the system. Uh, the projects here that I listed are five that we intend to begin designing this calendar year as completed and ready for construction in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the first one is our highest priority project, and I'm going to spend most of my focus here, but we do have other projects similar to what Carlos was talking about, ex-alternates. These will be designed and ready for construction if for some reason our priority project alters or, uh, some kind of broken line. Our, our existing wastewater treatment plant, uh, in its configuration now was built in two phases. The headworks, which is this area here, was built, uh, back, actually down here, built in about ten years ago. And twenty seventeen, we completed the more major project that I think most of you are familiar with. The design for this project called for average capacity of ten million gallons per day with the ability to treat the two-hour peak flow with P factor three, thirty million gallons per day or instantaneous basis. What we have realized is that we're flowing about five million gallons per day on average, so fifty percent capacity, no problems there. But when it comes to peak flows, since the plant was put online, we had events, three or four, maybe five events, where we had experienced peak flows low twenties, even up to twenty-five million gallons per day. That's a peak, that's a peak factor five, sixty-seven percent higher peak flow in our current situation than had been anticipated with top wastewater. We're talking recently. This is the, uh, plan on run, uh, just a self-comparison on Fifty Fourth Street. So there's a lot of extra water coming to us during those storm events, and instead of dealing with that, uh, by oversizing the existing plant the traditional way is to take the excess volume that your plant captured and then store it off on the side. That's one approach to dealing with it. The best way is to say, we're gonna fix the inflow and infiltration problems that are creating the inflow infiltration, all that peak flow coming to the plant. Uh, to do that would take us decades of dedicated effort to go through our entire system and start typing it up, replacing old manholes, covers, uh, replacing old clay lines that had lost their gaskets. We need, we have a problem now that needs a solution, we can't wait for that. This is really the foundation of our master plan, this is where our wastewater ends up. And what we have right now, because of those peak flows, that wastewater that's backing up in our main lines, even into the downtown, it may not overflow, but it's coming pretty close, rising up in manholes, getting very close to the point where it will overflow. And by addressing this, we're going to unplug the bottom end and allow those pipes drain more fluid. So that's really the fundamental intent we're talking about. In twenty sixteen, when this plant was being constructed, uh, a lot of the excavation spoils ended up being built up in a burn, and so there is an equalization base in that. Uh, that was very helpful during the transition from the old plant to the new plant, but it's not a permitted facility. The state requires that it have some type of lining, your concrete liner or membrane liner. They're also insisting that equalization have, uh, some type of aeration, so you have to aerate. It's very valuable at any point in time to use that, I think it's very arguments to say that's just the worst money, but that's what the state's under forces to do on health care for the piano roads. But either aerobic or venting from going anaerobic frustrates a lot of odor, it smells all the time. So this is one component of the cost, the other issue really has to do with the, uh, the phase of the project twenty years ago. And this is a picture profile of that, this station in headworks, there's three functions that are performed in this structure. Wastewater comes in, it reaches the stream, and that removes large debris, it's always. Uh, another, the next process is removal of grit, shown there in the green, and then the third process is just in that flow and that gap up into the treatment plant, uh, where all the aerobic treatment happens, is eventually discharged into the royal. The problem here is that these, these processes were not designed for the peak flows that the scene cannot simply make them favor the existing structure. The consultant has recommended and, and staff agrees that these processes would be better served if they were removed, put into an above-ground structure and elevated headworks. Uh, we still need the pumps down here, we would need some pump improvements, but that's, that's normal, we're placing pumps every seven years anyway, so, uh, that kind of fits with the normal operation of the main. So to take these in an above-ground structure that's fairly complicated, a lot of concrete, that would also serve to split the flow between the equalization and the plant process when you have those peak flows. So our consultant, uh, who works in our master plan, has estimated the cost of seventeen million dollars for that project. That's based on upstate pricing. We see a, a, a derating factor here in our region, contractors can build more cost effectively. Uh, we think that's somewhere in the order of seventy percent less than maybe what you see in San Antonio or Dallas or other parts of the state. Uh, the other factor is that we have a construction department, and as you know, we've, uh, we've significantly crossed by doing more and more within the limits of our ability. So on a, on a project like this, we would contact out the major concrete work and all the equipment, all the underground piping, something. We're thinking that the cost here would be hopefully under ten days, but we've seen such rapid escalation in prices, uh, this does have some built-in buffer. We think, uh, we want to aim higher on this number than lower. The pictures here illustrate the problem we had with grit, and we get a very fine sand that comes in our wastewater, it's carried with the flow. We have four aeration bases, this is one of them that, uh, just a month ago, uh, was taken out of service, and it was filled up to these aeration diffusers, this, these little, uh, diffusers, bubble air into the wastewater, aerate it, and you can see that in some areas here, particularly on the, uh, entry end, it's gotten up to the level of the diffusers. Takes two weeks, or three, to shovel out all that debris and all that grit and sand, uh, and, and that's a process problem. It, uh, harms your process, but it also causes damage to your equipment. So the rest of these are some of the alternate projects that we are going to begin designing on, uh, we do need to do these on a shorter period of time. I'll just summarize these quickly, here is City Lake, our, our downtown treatment plant. It's fed by the main canal going to the city, there's five by five concrete box, and then it's round reinforced concrete pipes. All the leaks, springs leaks, thirteen street project, uh, has spun a lot of those, has this pipeline, uh, bench structures been uncovered. We think we can retain this and slipline it, we would plan on replacing this. In its current state, it cannot keep up with the capacity of the plant of water, so there's a couple things that we want to do. Rehab and rehabilitation, but also capacity increase, uh, estimated cost here is four point one.
What's ours?
Uh, reinforced concrete. Sure, okay, our next, uh. Sorry for the actors. Actually, Carlos's work is going to be, all this storm drains are pretty much our C P R. And some of you know, we've been doing some work, uh, to replace as best as spent pipe in our system, and treasure bills recently has been created. We've now moved on to the place, an area which is located, uh, up in here. Once that's over, we're gonna be ready to dedicate some of that rehabilitation effort to some projects. This is not the entire grid of our network, but these are sixteen locations where we have repetitive problems, pipe is broken. We know we get infiltration in some places where the pipe is gone and we might just have, have a little water just flowing through. So we want to take care and address those sixteen locations, about sixteen thousand feet, uh, relatively small diameter pipe, sixty-six manholes that are breaking water. Based on pricing that, uh, we have for the water, uh, projects we've done, we're estimating it's just going to come online and help to do it. This uses a diverse process to minimize surface destruction as much as possible. It's more expensive, but get into tight quarters, we don't have options to overcut in a lot of places. Our, our water treatment process uses a quadrants removed sediment that comes to us in river water, and that has to be removed and creates a water sledge, that's not wastewater sledge, it's purely water sledge. Downtown plant, we store that temporarily in the moods, when that starts filling up, we've got to make a shift in watering operation. Then we haul that off and we're, uh, less watery state, which is basically a plant where it's mixing sludge from that plant stored in our storage moods. That magoon is starting to fill up, and that's, uh, that's an op, this is an operation, but we need to do some improvements here to split these so that we can take one side offline for drainage maintenance, we don't have that ability now. That's one component of cost, we also need to improve our sludge processing and our de-watering. So those are capital intensive projects. Uh, we had some studies in the past, it, uh, suggests a number of, escalated those based on inflation. Going an extra twenty percent on top of that to account for recent times of prices, so we got an estimated cost of like, three, four.
Sir, on that downtown plan, we go back two slides, uh, the downtown, we have that, the, the, the rectangle, the two, uh, only module you talked about?
Right there.
Close to right there?
Yes.
So you have the road right there, and then, uh, then you have the railroad tracks, and then there's a piece of land right there. At one point, waterworks was considering bricks to them. Um, you wouldn't visit that to, to increase your bascums left and just go. Go, go, like, I'm gonna do the same thing on the other side of the tracks?
I'm sure that's possible, the problem that comes up that I, that I see immediately is if we got railroad, I think all this is railroad right away over here. So you've got to find some way to move a process across railroad tracks. And there's some possibility to do that. Uh, I think that the solution to de-watering this ledge here that recommended is drying beds. And, uh, to your point, there's not a lot of, there's not a land here to put drying beds, so.
Got a moment?
We, we have a lot of work left to do on this, the problem with the railroad, president paid a hand move, building a constant, that's all, railroad, okay, railroad, it's tremendous, but it's. And deal with the road, you need lots of money, lots of lawyers, lots of, lots of companies, they don't have to be in the end. That's, that's a thousand percent.
You don't have a lot of money, you don't.
And they, they don't even participate and have their own company.
Sounds like, good. Sounds like good.
So we'll move on to the next, and this is the last project. This is getting back to our pipe burst, replacement of water lines. The next highest density location where we have a lot of our meets breaks, is an area on North First Street, just one, we get a deep air station from 77. And about 28,000 linear feet of pipe that we would propose to replace, pipe burst and process, $6.3 million is the cost of this. So that's, that is a, the discussion of some really major projects that begin design this year, they should be ready for construction next year. Our priority is this project right here at the wastewater plant. I would note that what's coming in our master plant, it's heavily dominated by sewer, that's where most of our needs are. And this is the downstream location where all of that comes, we need to have some fixes. We had big rainstorms, water builds up in that devastation, we got bad water coming in downtown in this area. You don't see it overflowing yet, but it's right, it's risen up in manholes, and we need to reduce that risk of overflow or capacity building system with fewer overflows. You have, you have water, which is tracts, human, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, how much of that 5.6 are you looking to, proposing to, to spring?
The reason I have Tim do the presentation is that he has a second round of money next year, so he's getting everything ready for next year.
Oh, so that's, that's, that's not in here?
So we're only talking about the 10 million, if you get the resolution from the city council, then Tim knows what you can count off for next year, he's going to account for that as well.
So the cost that you're talking about, there is no, I mean, that's just a great cost, there's no, you don't have any grants or...
This is just straight up cost estimates, however they would be funded, that's what it costs.
But do you all want the grants, do you all do grants as well or not?
Well, we hope so. I think one of the, one of the realities in the water and wastewater world is that the federal government, it's not money for water and wastewater, they send it to the state agencies to manage, say, water plants. Texas, that's the water, help board, they also get into some stormwater stuff. But most of their programs, if you are not economically disadvantaged, they are, they are interest rate reductions, so you get a discount on your interest rate, but you still have to pay it back. Those loans don't count against your debt service. So we can go after them, but in terms of grants...
But then there's, and so the city are aside, it's really just one of those.
But we're going to get, we're going to be getting a new qualify for, to qualify for grants, so I think for the French, probably, if you qualify those projects, you can't qualify water and wastewater for grant, because you're, 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 really low ground, probably get, probably get some grant, which is, which is a certain size, where they are qualified.
There's household cost factors they look at, how much they're looking at, how much percentage of that goes to pay for water and sewer. If you're below a certain threshold, you qualify those economically disadvantaged. I would say pre-american combs, their systems, they were entirely separate, as I understand, 25 years ago, the state didn't fund them, significantly not, to build their sewer system. Now their wastewater comes to us through wholesale contract.
So my question, so these are direct costs, and we're only getting 10 million in the next round, what, how, you have to help me fund, or you have to pay it?
That's going to be a much broader conversation during the workshop, that you mentioned earlier.
That's right.
We're going to be talking about a lot of the city councils, about funding a capital improvement program, and how do we go about paying for it?
There's over 100, 150 million? Something like that. Waste water and wastewater project improvements that are committed on water. So you added another 15 million for drainage?
No, it's a lot of, it's 200 million. But I'm not confused with, yeah, if his, if we're not going to participate, give them any money off of this 10 million, what are you proposing, what are we listing as? Are you going to present that money, all the money?
That's totally up to the state commission. That's the purpose of this workshop and the city council, even at 10 million, that doesn't matter. Well, whatever he gets, this is a, this is a windfall, so this is it. So whatever we get for drainage, that's something we didn't have, and we don't have to go to people like Matt for, we can start doing improvements. Whatever Tim gets on water or wastewater improvement, that's something that he has to count for, because of that, and, and, and you, as a separate entity, don't receive any of this company, any money, you don't get any money on that?
They all come to the city, or the apartment of the city, so that's how the government sees harm, that the waterworks were working upon, with the city.
We just have to, we have to, we find out, then, model it, we can't, we can't, which is, is, which is about. The drainage, drainage grants, that depends, are identified, are quite specific, they're quite specific to a project that we have, so we can't take those funds, can't take those funds and turn them over to water. They're highly competitive, you can't, stormwater, and, and, and you cannot, it would be a violation of insurance, if we take an application for a specific project like Fifth and Seventh Street project, we got that grant, and take those lines and use it for waterworks, that would be the violation of that, and they would ask for that entire money. So there's no way, there's not, not very comfortable, grants are very project-specific, that's why you'd have to break them all down individually and submit them into the, you can't submit a package of 20, but you have to tackle these at the time, because they require different applications.
So how much money did you plan for this next year to put away for your debt work? I know that you, you can only do so many years, but you, you're, you're sort of, you know...
We're going to look to our board, guys, and that workshop is going to help us.
How much did you, how much did you expect this past?
Past year, we're probably going to be 5 or 6 million.
Exactly, and you've probably been knowing that every year, well, saying, that you can't fix it every one time. You've been putting, you know, that much money into the system every, you said, tell me to go more, so I just...
We, how do we use to increase that?
Yeah, so if you like, for last year, so probably 50 million, well, we have, I think 50 million dollars there, if you're not going to get a house, maybe, it's worth something, million dollars of profits. That's what the, 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 which you, which you, that house, which they're pushing, pushing that, it's worth something, so, simple million more, you're after that. So it's tremendous cost savings to, 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 and also not part of it, but they wouldn't have to pay the, the, the days, the days to go. And so, but it's just, you know, the program, you just have to warm, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's super, and so it's up, you know, they, they've done a great job, but it's a good target.
I do, I do want to make one statement.
And every, and every, and every year, every year.
Every year.
And that's a little...
I wasn't, what, what happened? But I would say that waterworks loses even faster than cat did, but it's a funding challenge, and a lot, a lot of money started reaching out of cap.
So, you got to say this, sorry, sorry, speaking of some of these different sessions, someone that have covered that thought, this is revenue rates, the water and wastewater rates, you know, so, so, so there's a balance in that, and I know this, I know this is not easy for anybody to make decisions on, which is fair, the unfortunate part here is that we are getting 20, 21 million.
Well, I'm, I'm, well, I'm trying to, but just how much are, are you proposing, I would use this?
But again, as something the city council initially got, told you to do the entire 10 million, with here, except here, but it all depends on what you want to allocate to drainage, what we allocate to drainage, or others, with line items, than the last 10 years. But if it gets $5, that's $5 more than he was counting, because he wasn't counting that much at the time. It wasn't that I called him, I told him about it, he tried to call. But, but that's what, that's the direction we need, we need direction, and, and we really need the direction so that we can include some of the expenditures, some of the accounting, for the second reading, so that we can move these projects forward, which everyone beyond the side. We've given you a lot of this, a lot of them, there's more projects than we have done. You can tell us what direction that is, we have one more, and, sorry. We have the MIS department, and so, you might not know this really quick, so on the broadband, we want to pull back in the broadband a little bit, and if you have any feedback, what we like to do, instead of asking for the $4 million for doing a project, we like to bring aboard the consultants, to look at our needs, to study what we have. I think a consultant will also look at what the private sector is doing. I have met with a company, who's looking at installing fiber to homes and apartments, and they're probably going to get started here in the next few months. So we like to study what we have, what the private sector is going to bring to our city, what we need, and possibly create three options. Option one, for one fiber, what are their costs, should we do it? Option two, fiber broadband, or broadband home, and we know that is the city commission. I did approach a school commissioner, Dr. Ariana, and I asked if they would be willing to partner with us, and she says, yes, there's a strong possibility that they'd be willing to partner with us, with a consultant, and then moving forward beyond that, whatever comes from that, possibly even project.
But, you know, and I mentioned this before, I, I don't, I don't mind the fiber part of it, because that's money we actually charge, and we get reimbursement, that's a great investment. I have very much concerns about the broadband thing, because it's just so fast, the technology. I would, I wouldn't mind spending money on a consultant, but with the fiber, and you see where that fiber is needed.
I agree. I think that's, that's where it should be primarily focused, so, I don't think it should be, but, fiber, fiber is related, or ultimately will be part of, and, and, and from an economic standpoint.
Do I bring industry here? And that's what they do, and they do have, you have fiber.
And so we're not looking at just proving the consultant, and then the next round, we can look at, so we can have somebody...
Yes, we're only asking for the 125, for the consultant, at this point.
And how much is the school district, of course?
Well, I can approach her, I'd like to, she's probably seeing me right now, but, you know, I'd like to ask her. So, because I know initially you were giving the $1 million, so when I agree with the 125, I agree totally with that. So where's the rest of the money, where to just open free money that you can have on drainage or something else?
Can we discuss the...
Let's go back to the first one. We put all the sides together and make it easier. And, and, right here, so, what we, what I would recommend is that, because the revenue losses are 3.6 million, and these are up for grabs, but to be honest with you, Commissioner, even this can be used for infrastructure funds. The most important general, is to be used for...
I like to discuss the employee one, because I feel very strongly about a couple things. Number one, this is a windfall, very good, and I wanted to look at, I know you proposed a $1,000 for everybody, I wanted to look at one payroll or even two payrolls, what that cost would be to, to this, and, and reward our employees and every single one of our employees. I'm already, across the board, whatever they're, whatever they're making for the month, pay them one month out, or pay them half, whatever's the, whatever the, what do you say? I think that will show, I mean, you're never going to be able to thank them enough, because I know a lot of them will fall out and just like that, as everybody else did, but I feel strongly that we should look at that, and because we look at the other industries, like the healthcare and the fridge, I mean, all of those, the hospitals, that was hanging out, they were compensating, their, their nurses, stuff that were in that, middle of that pandemic, and, and, or something, they were rewarded very well. And so I like to do the same thing for our employees, just because of the fact that we have the opportunity to do that.
But I appreciate that very much, Commissioner, because I can say that I'm very proud of that we're breathing masks up and stepped up in that pandemic, the testing sites, the clinics, the food distribution, and the, the, the whole, the whole bound vaccines.
And it's because of that, I think that's why you see Excel Techs only where that, you did this payroll, the, the city service was still provided, you'll still continue to operate in some really hard days, you know?
And not to suffer, because we were dealing with all these additional duties, but the sidewalk, the drainage, the roads, everything continued moving forward, no one saw an impact, but the employees, all of us stepped up, all the employees stepped up, they do the such and such, and they did an incredible job, incredibly.
I just don't think the $1 million is enough.
So to do a one payroll for all employees, including waterworks, 1.6 million. To do two payrolls for all employees, including waterworks, which we are considering essential workers, as 3.2. Now, this is for, it's, 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 it's...
Or negative one.
So if we did one payroll, we could take, open that, so if we 750 bands, it'd be 2.2, that's divided, by 2.2 by 60. How would you see in, in terms of, in terms of, 20, 200, 200 plus cap? Oh, we had to cap it, we had to, so, so, basically, we want to do it that way, which I agree with what you guys are saying, but at the same time, I think you should have threshold, because you have a lot of people that are making a lot more money, then I would rather it go to the employees of the board.
But I, no, but I disagree, because everybody worked their foot, everyone...
Yes, so, again, you have some other employees, let me talk, you, let me talk, please, but you have some other employees as well that are very, very well compensated, and I think, again, I agree for the, but I think it should be like a threshold, like say, you know, if you make worth $100,000, then I think the one, the lower employees that they don't make as much, I think we should give more money instead of spreading it around. You said, we're talking about a monthly, you know, he gets, he gets salary.
So, so that makes, that makes a lot of it, you know, our salary employees, sometimes working 50, 60 hours a week, our hourly employees is working 30, 35, 40 hours a week, whatever it is. So our, our, our executive staff or our minimum staff, they put in a lot of work, right, and in the middle of the storms, movement, those are the guys that are out there, in their leadership roles, coordinating, they don't get an opportunity to say, you know what, I'm not going to work in front of the city. That's the guys that are, that are, that are, that are out there. So like I said, to be fair, and I think that's the fairest, that's the fairest assessment that you're discriminating against anybody, you know, I'm not looking at them, are parts of the place, people? Yes, they're, they're all, whatever they're making for the month, it's twice a month. I think that's a fair thing, because the lower level, our hourly employees can't say, well, I was, no, we got paid a whole month salary, just like everybody else. I'm not going to give one each best and the other, I think that's, not discriminatory, but, but, you know, I want to keep it positive, you know, again, we're not going to give too many opportunities to do this for employees, and, and I think that's a long way for all, all sides, for the, for the, and for, and for everybody. For the, for the unemployed and for the unemployed. It's just justification for the responsibilities that they have. So many employees have responsibilities and every single level, at every single department. We have so many departments that make the city run.
And that makes a, make it a percentage, not all. So somebody making a hundred or more for the city, that's a ten times percent, that's one percent, a half a percent. Somebody making little dollars now, fifteen dollars now. That's a massive percentage payers, you know, one time payers. I mean, as a percentage, just mass on the base.
Yeah, so just to be fair, again, it's all work trade work, you know, very appreciative of all. So, so, and it could be effective in me, I mean, let's, this is right.
The city council gives this direction, would include whatever the second reading of the budget amendment. And they could give it as early as. Would be the, it would be the, probably in the judge of mine.
So I'd like to, I mean, I would just propose to do it for thirty days, right? Thirty days.
That would be very powerful. I know with two patrons.
Two patrons.
He's going to have.
Just two patrons, right? It's for every single employee, part-time.
Okay, well, that, that's a big question. And I have to get with the house and I figure I'm not going to make that money for one of us. So there's, there'll be a process for that. That'd be about two, three, three point two million. And there's no reason why that couldn't come out of the one point eight six.
No, wherever, wherever.
That's one point eight six five, we already got eight that we had allocated, that's. That's three point, what, six, two point six million. And so the, the rest of it can come from.
The rest of the money is, continue to do.
And can I, if the commission doesn't want to do the reimbursement, that can be used on.
I'm going to throw some numbers out. And I'm looking. So one, at four, four minutes, four to ten, we've developed it. They did a, yeah, that's, it's a, ten million dollars for Water Works projects. Six million dollars for drainage. They should account for, when you get grant money, that's all that's about. And that's what Carlos is, is, first group and all of this. I think that's about five and a half million together. Six million dollars for drainage. Three point two million dollars. And whatever's left over, which is around two point eight million dollars. The reverse. And then keeping in mind the two point eight million dollars because all. Quartering profits, or they could use the street profits.
Yes.
You know, streets are important to.
I should be doing about ten percent of streets a year. We're going to be about one and a half, two percent. Even with the two minute goal. So anything with more, we put in the streets. You know, we have a lot of relatives, maybe a lot. If there's a consensus, that's what we'll do and we will put it up in the amendment for the next meeting. At the next pass, except for the ten minutes per one week. That will be for next year and we can put this again. We would budget that for next year. We're going to do a budget amendment.
Yeah, we can't do a budget.
So that would be about now. You need to know.
Yeah, we did it back.
Again, we can't vote here, but if we get that direction, that is what Water Works will do for the second reading of the budget. About ten million, I think we want to count for that next year. And then I would say we're just going to have to figure out a way that. It was asked, what? And that is true. And that's, that's up to the city council.
So then it's the final.
I, you know, we can take that up. We'll do the one twenty-five. We just still want to do the one twenty-five for this partnership. Yes, if she doesn't want to participate. No, she does, she was adamant. And I said, you're ready to go with the R and Q, so we had it ready. So you can't, you can't have it back until we get to the budget. Once we get the budget, you don't have to dodge it.
All right.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We blew our workshop, thank you everybody. Have a great weekend.